Well, for me, it looks like it's seven o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Well, all right, six o'clock.
It has to be piggy or something.
It's hard to break that old habit.
One of you in the side.
Last Wednesday, a buddy of mine came in thinking it was Thursday and had a doctor's appointment.
I've done that.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got six o'clock, and the clock on the wall does as well, so I'll call this February the third meeting to order. First item of business is a pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
Ms. Joinee, in saluting our flag, a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I need to do tonight is to get a motion to excuse Mr. Lewis from the meeting tonight. He's under the weather. Would someone... Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay. Approval of the consent agenda, but before we do that, I do want to add one thing about the Wrong Door program. I'd like to add that to seven C, which will be under legal. If I need a motion, all in entertaining section.
I move that we add the Wrong Door to the legal.
Seven C. Okay. Seconds?
A couple of people have asked me if we'd pull D out of the consent agenda and just tell what happened there instead of just passing that. Is that okay?
I have no objection. Okay. All right.
Does that move down into legal or where do you...
It's under the consent agenda.
Yeah, let's move it down to legal.
And before we approve the consent agenda, there was the minutes last month. It made reference at the beginning, said November of 2019 rather than January. If we could just make that correction.
Okay.
Another correction to the minutes. It said that we changed that property to C three, and I think we changed it to C one.
We'll look at...
Just probably a typo.
Three.
One. One is only...
Just to just say it was three.
Okay, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
Okay. Any other corrections, additions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented with the changes. Second? All in favor? All right. Okay, we next have the public session. Mr. Lynn, welcome, sir. Bring it on.
So I was coming to y'all tonight. We have four upcoming events. We have scheduled June 20th is the Braveheart 5K, and I recently found out, I guess, the Taste Cell is not going to be hosted downtown, and I was wondering, by any chance, instead of closing the street off for the 5K, if we could use one lane and keep one lane open? Would that be an issue or something like that? That's what I thought about, maybe bring up y'all's attention instead of having the whole street closed down for a couple hours. It would be easier to have just one lane closed so we still have traffic on Main Street.
What's the board say to that?
What event was it?
Well, the 5K, you have to start it out here and go down to Harrison Avenue and back.
So you just want to go down one lane?
Yeah, one lane, have one lane closed for the runners instead of having both lanes closed for a couple hours.
Chief Adams? Yeah, we can handle that. We can kind of do that for the second weekend of winter winter lan, just close the one lane. That shouldn't be that major of an issue.
I mean, I don't want to cause any problems for businesses to be closed down for a couple hours and then go on cake.
Sure.
For, you know, for, you know, three to four hours and all of a sudden go, okay, wait, we could have made some money. So that's what I thought would be best to do, one lane.
And most of the streets you go on is just one lane anyway.
Yes, yeah, they're got, the runners will go with the flow of traffic no matter what, and they come back with the flow of traffic. They get down Harrison Avenue to Bidwell and back and all that stuff. So it's becoming bigger and bigger, as we all know. We knight everybody out here in the parking lot, too, so they finish in the parking lot. Also, I want to bring up, too, about the radio station, WFFC's annual car show. I was going to see about getting that closed for March, I mean, sorry, May 16th on the Square, just Iowa, from 8:30 until 12:30. And so I think it's already scheduled, but I was going to come up tonight and talk about that. And also, third ball on the Thursday is 80's flashback 8K and all that stuff, the Weekend 80's Flashback. I was going to buy the parade on August 1st from 10 to 11, and then we have the square, and that's the square where the individuals meet, the guests and all that stuff of the parade. And so this year, we do have a couple of individuals coming this year that are celebrities, there have been sitcom individuals on and stuff, too. And then we also have a Miss 198-something pageant, too, that we'll have a grand marshal for, too. So this year's going to be a big one, so I'd really like to support the town about closing for the parade from 10 to 11, and just having the square area off on that area.
Okay.
Stopping the both lanes of traffic for a full hour?
Oh, I mean, it's for a parade. It's a parade.
Yes, it is, but you say from 10 to 11.
Yes, sir.
That makes me think that's an hour.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
And that's, I mean, if, you know, we're going to, we're not going to bypass them around by the hospital or nothing.
No, 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 the hospital, we're just like a route of them similar to the Christmas parade, start back here.
So would the stoppage of traffic really just be for that time the actual parade is...
Start and finish, yeah.
And that's 10 minutes or...
Yeah, I mean, 10 to 15, depends on how many entries we have, too.
That's more like it.
And then that said, and then maybe they have the square area, just in that way, just have the square area closed off for the meet and greet. Because it's true, but we have a, from the 80's, a show called Too Close to Comfort, Lydia Cornell, the blonde girl on there, she's coming from California. Also, too, we have Peter Warwick, who was a Florida State wide receiver, he's coming, too, because it's on SCP like I do, and he's going to come up. And we also have a few other celebrities, too, that are coming to be part of this year, huh?
It drew a lot, a lot of people last year. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, actually, this is going to be a big one. This is our seventh year, so I just want to get y'all's support again on that, too, about closing out in that area or following, like you said, that would be a better choice. And then maybe the square, have the square closed off a little bit for us.
Okay.
So that's it tonight.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate you. Yes, ma'am?
And Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, a couple of the requests, the Braveheart 5K, and then also the event with the WFSE Car Show, you just approved those street closings in your consent agenda, so you have approved those. The only one in addition, I believe, that Mr. Lynn is requesting is the parade one. So just so Council's aware, those were in your bracket.
So we're okay with just going with all the requests of Mr. Lynn?
Should I take action on a person's behalf?
Pardon?
No, sir. But it's, but it's already in your consent agenda.
It's in your consent agenda.
Except for the one, and I don't believe you're taking action on that.
Okay.
Right? That's not the Council's understanding.
Okay. Mr. Mock?
Yeah.
Welcome, sir. Have you recovered from that football game?
Yeah, a little bit. I slept a couple hours last night, I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm going to give y'all, I guess, if you want to pass one, give each one, and I'm going to just let my printer damn work. My printer was out of heat, so when I started. This is on, I know we've discussed the beverage, alcohol beverage, ABC Board. I have to have this approved and on my desk to submit to the ABC Board by April 1st. But I found a statue, and I've been doing my research, there's a statue that went into effect in 2013, Statue 136-27 dot four, about a main highway, six feet from the sidewalk, and the seating of, I think it's five foot for handicap, but there's 11 feet from the highway to the sidewalk, five feet from where my barricade will be. It's the little string things. I am thinking about building a table that is secure to the thing, and it's going to be a high top bar, and the waitresses are going to be able to go behind it, not in front of it. And the barricade's going to go underneath the table, so it'll be barricaded off. But I don't know where y'all are at on the whole getting everything approved, where I can do this. On that, it's stating that the DOT is, the way it looks in the statue, I could be quoting something wrong, but the way statute, you get approval by the DOT on this, and that is basically if I provide all my permits, whatever. I mean, that's the way I read the statute, and it's not leasing out property to this, trying to figure out this, and it's basically getting approval by the DOT that this person's going to cooperate with any construction, anything, six feet from the main highway, five feet for handicap, all the way through, and I'm going to have my border for the ABC Board, and my table will be sitting there, and that's it. That's the way I read that statue. I could be wrong, I don't know. You tell me, Henny. I mean, I just did my research to try, I didn't know where y'all were at on the whole concept of alcohol, and this is the only way I can work around it. I don't, I mean, what y'all...
Should we put this to the ordinance review committee?
Yes, sir.
Would it be meeting this month? Okay. Roland and, we'll jump right on this.
Okay, I just kind of need something, I mean, set in stone by April 1st because I have to pay my dues and all that.
No, I think we were aware of the April date. The, this, there is a process for permitting on a DOT right away. The difficulty with towns ordinances has been you have a prohibition on alcohol on sidewalks, period. So it's, that's the thing to figure out how that can jive with what's permissible if, if you deem to allow it, that cities all across the state can do otherwise under, under the ABC system. So we'll take a look at this.
Okay. All righty.
Thanks, Roland. Appreciate it, sir. Mr. Ms. Edwards? Ah, welcome.
Hey there.
Hi there.
Hey. We figured we'd talk together because we own our business together and work together 24/7. So I'm Hannah Edwards, my husband Alan Edwards. We own and operate yonder down at 2720 Georgia Road. We are going on our second year being here in Franklin, and it's awesome. We decided that, you know, and we could go anywhere, right? It's like, we ended up in Franklin for some weird reasons, ended up loving it mainly because it's beautiful, said, hey, we're going to stay. So we bought an acre of land in town at 121 and 151 Hillcrest Avenue. There are four structures on that piece of land, and we are moving our business there, and we have, we're going to have like a produce market with fresh food because we are all locally sourced. We put a lot of our money back into this community, if y'all are not aware, and we do a really good job with that, and we don't have an 18-wheeler that pulls up and delivers any of our food, and we just really want to support Macon County as well as surrounding counties, just to feed people this awesome food that all these farmers have around here. But in addition to, I guess we have to have points here, but we wanted to introduce ourselves and let you know who we were. In...
Let me share that.
Huh?
We wanted to share an experience that we had opening a business in Macon County and in the town of Franklin. When we first opened two years ago, we rented the space. I outfitted it myself with a friend. We drove to Raleigh to get our ABC license, got our ABC license, opened up, decided we support all local businesses, we support local farms, all our food comes from local farms. So with that in mind, we decided to also support a local brewery. And we've made some friends at the Lazy Hiker, so we were serving their beer, tour breakfast place, so we sold maybe, you know, six pack a week. My wife and I walked in one day on our day off, and we were followed in by a man with a badge telling us that he was demanding an inspection at that moment. I recorded my conversation with him, and he backed down from that, and through that process, you can help me, too.
We found out that there was an ordinance that Franklin has that technically y'all don't consider us a restaurant.
Because of the number of seats.
The number of seats that we have in our restaurant. So technically, I think we have to have 36 seats inside our business to be considered a restaurant. Right now, I don't know what we're considered as far as the town of Franklin goes, but basically y'all took our beer license away, or somebody did.
We gave it up because we called the county commissioner. We first thought it was a county ordinance. We called the county commissioner. One county commissioner showed up. I don't, we don't need to say who it was, but only one of all of them that I called showed up. I spoke with the town manager, and they did help, and the chief of police came out and talked to us, and we tried to determine what was this ordinance, why would we be having to give up our beer license? And we never really got any clarity, and the only clarity that we ever really got was through a gentleman at the Lazy Hiker that provided us with an article from when the ordinance was passed, and it was just a sentence in the article. No code, no, I still, we still don't know, but like I said, we only sold about six beers a week, so we thought, well, it's not even worth the hassle, so we'll give it up. But rather than have this resentment over that, we wanted to make the town council aware of what we were up against as a new business, just trying to understand and trying to do the right things, getting our permits, trying to find out the information we needed to know, and...
And those permits are $1,000. And we, and we went and paid that money to then be told...
And it took us almost a year to get that money back, that we could, you know, we went through the permitting process with the town. That could have been brought up with the town, it could have been brought up with the state, it could have been brought up through the whole process, but it never was until someone followed us in on our day off for the badge and demanded that we wait, wait there for inspection.
On another note, we have patio out front of Yonder. If y'all have not been to our restaurant, please come. It's incredible. So we are on, like, we're in this parking lot technically, and our patio spills over into the black asphalt. Well, in the spring and summer, we have tons of tables out there because we only seat 26 people inside. So outside, to make more money, we like to have more tables outside. People love sitting out there. Well, someone came in maybe three weeks ago saying that if we want to continue to sell alcohol on our patio, that we need to rope an area off to make sure that it, that it doesn't come to the black asphalt area, I guess, the beer, or, well, not beer, but the mimosa or whatever. And that's fine, but this is a first we're hearing of that, too, and we're wondering what kind of rope, like, is it, can we go just make something ourselves, or are y'all going to require us to have like this specialty something?
Ms. Edwards, I think what we're going to have to do is to get with the ordinance review committee and start clarifying some of what you're saying. You're bringing something up that I wasn't real familiar with, but it goes along with the conflicts between the state and local government on some of these alcohol laws, and I think the best thing to do is to bring this up in the ordinance review committee because we've got another situation similar.
Yeah, we just heard that. This month, because we have to renew our license as well in April, and we're really just almost throwing our hands up with it. Like, we don't drink alcohol. My husband and I could care less. But as far as the public goes, you know, we want to make money, so...
The one thing, Mr. Mayor, that I do think is worth mentioning in public is that I don't believe this is, that the restaurant, and I hate to sound like, you know, the one office that sends you back the morning you've just been at, but the restaurant definition is not a, in your local ordinances, the law enforcement activity they're talking about is not town activity. I don't believe this has been state regulation and enforcement. And, you know, I think we'd be more than happy, and I think we are trying to help businesses that want to do this kind of thing, figure out where the lines are, and be more than happy to discuss it with them.
Counsel, if my memory serves me correctly, the definition of a restaurant is a state statute, is it not?
Yes, I believe that's right.
That's what I'm thinking. Let us get with you at the ordinance review committee. We'll notify you when we're going to meet and the time, and sit down and see if we can help you reconcile some of this.
Okay, and if you could also please help us with some clarity on a grease trap that y'all are going to require us to install at our new location. We are going to have some new construction, and this is going to be new for us because our existing place has a grease trap. We've been told from surrounding people as well as Little Caesars that, you know, that was a big challenge, and we're talking up to $8,500. And if we're going to need to have that expense and budget for that expense to even do this project...
Yes, ma'am. Well, we'll need you to get with our engineers on that. I know, I don't, yes, ma'am, Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, just to kind of address one of the concerns, because myself and our town planner have spent quite a bit of research on this, and if we have just a moment, so they're not stuck waiting in limbo, waiting to the ordinance review, we, we are prepared to speak on that, just to clarify. So if I may, I'd like Justin Setser just to come up and clear, clear at least one item that the council needs to understand that they would be faced with. So, Mr. Setser?
So we had another business wanting to do something similar to what they're doing, and they were kind of running into the same thing. They were going to have like 24 seats. And come to find out, back when the town adopted alcohol by the drink in the 90's, they adopted, we allowed in restaurants, class A hotels and motels and private clubs only, is what it says, only. The only is the key word. And so when we did that, when it says restaurant, then you go by the state's requirement of the definition for a restaurant, which was a minimum of 36 seats, which is where they run into. So it wasn't, it wasn't something that like the town tried to do. They were just saying, there are going to be restaurants, and then probably one of those back in the 90's didn't realize what the definition, or the definition's changed along the way or something.
Well, there's only so many options you have for how you can have a local, and it's either caddybar the door, open your doors and serve alcohol to whoever you want to, which we didn't opt for that, and it was a little more restrictive, hotels, motels and class A restaurants. But that's just the next option on, in the, there's only so many options under state law.
So I mean, that's where you're at, you're, I would assume it would have to be a change in the vote somehow, to allow, I think they probably would fall under eating establishments. It would be the definition of the ABC rules.
Okay. We have the ability to change it, Joan?
By referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah. It won't be an issue for us anymore, and our new location will have 36 seats, so we don't even, we're not even bringing it up because it's an issue for us. It's just something that we want the town council to be aware of because it's something that we experienced, so...
We'll look into it, and we'll get back with you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas? Diana Thomas? Welcome, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening. Hi, I'm just here tonight to see if we can open a conversation as something that, I'm new here. I still split time between Florida and here, but I am moving myself more here permanently, hopefully in another year, and I'll be here permanently. Something happened in the last 36 hours that allowed me to meet some people that were homeless in this town, and homeless by lack of health. Each one had a health-related illness that was job-related. I own a business in Florida. I have employees in Florida. So I'm always interested in caring about everybody's town and how things work. And these people didn't have a place to stay, and I said, but it's freezing outside. I said, don't we have a winter, a night winter shelter here? I live in Florida, and it never gets this cold in Florida, and as soon as this is going to get somewhere around 40 because our homeless population is off the charts in Florida in the wintertime. People truly up north do everything they can to get a bus ticket to Florida to spend winter in Florida like anybody that has a lot of money, because you usually will not die on the streets of Florida, you probably will not freeze dead. But on the other side of that, we have extreme wet weather shelters that open anytime the temperature's going to drop. These are not typically homeless shelters. These are places in churches and buildings that, that, that the, I guess I'm going to have to call Florida to find out, how do they establish these places? Because I was shocked to find out, we don't have any of that here. I've been everywhere today. I mean, I truly have been everywhere today. I have been to social services. I have been to the police station. I've been to the fire station. Where else did I end up? Oh, I called Care Net today. I called Making New Beginnings today. I've called The Father's House today. These are all places that help homeless people get back on their feet. Some haven't called me back yet, but I have gotten the consensus across the board from, I didn't get to talk to anybody at the fire station, nobody came to the door, but I did get to talk to people at the police station. And, and there isn't any place. The fire station and the police stations run in wellness calls on cold nights out on Greenway and in the forest around here, and I live across the street from the Greenway. I mean, it's a natural hotel out there at night, and I'm not having any problem with it, but come on, we can do better than this. This is cruel. I mean, we have laws not to leave our dogs out like this in some of this extreme weather, at least where I have come from, but I plan on making this my home. I'd like to see a little bit more humanity somehow. We have enough empty buildings. There's enough big churches around here. We're not talking about housing them, but from like 6 o'clock at night till daylight, and then they can go back out into the streets. But we're talking about nighttime, give them something hot to drink. I'm not talking about feeding them. I'm not talking about providing a bed even. I'm just talking about a warm room like we're sitting in right now with some dignity. Because the first thing you lose when you get sick and you're making a minimum wage job, it only takes three months. I mean, anybody can check the national records. Most of us only have money to last for three months, and a minimum age, a minimum wage worker can't last that long. If they get sick and cannot go to work, you have less than three months that you probably going to be evicted. And if you sit there on top of the eviction, you might get it all the way to three months. In Florida, I've seen sick people take it all the way to six months because when they have taken into the court system, they make the landlords keep the people. But I just think we're better than this. This is the nicest town I've ever been in in my life. This is the friendliest people I've ever met in my life. I have never had so many friends, I've never had so many welcome. I have groups of people that come from everywhere, and we all get together and have a wonderful time and try to do the right thing, but I think as a town, and as Macon County, we're just letting, those amongst us that have the least shouldn't have to sleep on the Greenway when it's 20 or 30 degrees outside. And I think that, I'd like to ask, how do we open this discussion? Because I'd like somebody to check the records on these very cold nights that people are sleeping out. How many calls do the police have to run? How many calls do the first responders have to call because people are out here going into hyperthermia? And you take this cold and you add alcohol to it, and we have something that could be catastrophic on a person's life. And we all know this. You know, one of the churches, when I first, before I ever decided to even start leaving up here, I think it's the Methodist Church in town, then went down, they cleaned Greenway. I don't go to church very often, but I went to church that Sunday because I was so impressed with what the children were doing, raising food. with what the children were doing, raising food and the cleaning. I was just so impressed with what, what the church was doing. And I went in and what they were amazed at when they cleaned the Greenway was how many mattresses they found in the Greenway forest, how many blankets, how many towels. I mean, we have a, we have a hotel happening on the Greenway people and this just don't right. And I'd love for somebody, I'd love to know how to be part of a conversation to help find someplace or make someplace that they could come in for the night and sleep when it's really cold. It's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Just one, one point that we are trying to get a handle, a perception of what the problem really is. We not making much success in it, but we're working on it.
Put on some jackets and get some hot tea and take a walk on the Greenway on a cold night.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Anybody else get missed for the public session? All right, let's move on.
If I could, could we have your contact information before you leave?
Yes, sir. Where do I put it? I have to vote. I can't stay much longer.
If you'll just tell the clerk, please, ma'am.
Yes.
Mister?
Mister Mayor, I may have missed it. Did you do the consent agenda vote?
I thought we did.
You did.
I'm sure I'll be corrected if I didn't.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I thought you did as well and I voted for it, so. All right. Mister Ledford, Mister Jimbo, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Town Board, for letting me speak tonight. See, I have something here. My name is Jimbo Ledford and I am a longtime resident and business owner of the Town of Franklin. I'm before you tonight, representing Altitude Frequencies. We are a live music and entertainment venue located in the heart of Franklin, just across from the famous Old Town Market. In addition to live music and entertainment, we host several weekend-long music venues, menu festivals, music festivals throughout the year. And this is just specifically what I would like to speak with the Town Board about tonight. One of the largest obstacles we are facing in attracting, attracting weekend-long guests are overnight accommodations. I think we're all aware of the struggle Franklin has with accommodations for large overnight events and I would like to discuss one solution. Many music and art festivals like the ones we host rely on camping to help with the influx of visitors seeking to stay and play for many days. The Town of Franklin owns a large parcel of land known as the Whitmire property, located on the Highlands Road, not far from our venue. In early 2008, the Town of Franklin contracted the W.R. Martin Management Consulting Firm to conduct a land use assessment on Whitmire property. The firm's two top recommendations for this property were a passive recreational cultural use and land banking. We believe a temporary campground fits perfectly within both these recommendations as no permanent structures would have to be constructed. I'm not asking for the Town's permission at this point to use the Whitmire property for camping, but I'm asking for the Town's permission to do a feasibility study of our own. The proposed property is currently gated and we would need the Town's permission to access the property to survey the land, get quotes on barricades, portable toilets, security, clean up, anything else that may come up as part of our practicality assessment. We would also need the Town's permission to be able to get insurance quotes for the event and to be able to speak with the Town Attorney, Mr. Henning, regarding the logistics of a short-term lease and potentially allowing alcohol consumption on town-owned property. Would the Town permit us to move forward with our feasibility study on the Whitmire property and appoint us liaisons to communicate with about any questions that arise, in addition to allowing the Town Attorney, Mr. Henning, to work with us on any, on the legal end of this matter?
Okay, rule up. Anybody from the board wanting to comment? If not, Miss Ledford, we'll get back to you on some of this.
Okay.
I took it as you wanted us to actually make a decision on it and allow him the first step of prog-casting or whatever the word is, seeing if this is actually feasible for him to do.
That's what we're trying to figure out, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cost involved with this.
If I'm not mistaken, I think you're just asking for the council's permission to study the idea?
Yes, that's what I'm asking for, the Town's permission to study the idea.
With no cost to us at this point?
There's no cost to the Town. I just want, we'd be out there, people would be out there looking around. We're not going to make any permanent damage. We're not going to do anything like that, but we wouldn't need to go out. We'd probably measure some and see how many campsites we could get, where we could get them. Just, we would, we would need to get a quote from an insurance company, obviously, on event insurance and I'm sure they would, they would want to talk to somebody from the town in order to give us that permission. So we just really are asking for the Town's to even just to talk, talk to John, he's on your staff, so for him to speak with us. I imagine that you would need your permission.
Obviously, you'd share the results of the study with us, whether they were bad or good, or?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if it's, if it just gets to be too expensive is what it is, you know, we would, we would probably, what we would do is we would do the study and see what it would cost us and then how many sites we would probably have to sell or, you know, what we'd have to do, what all would be involved as these questions would come up. We'd perhaps speak with the Jimmy team, I'm sure, again, about the practicality of having in there as far as the fire field goes. And then we would, we would come back and decide whether or not this is, would be practical for us to use.
So council members, I think it's, it's always appropriate to, you know, when you have town property that's not public property to ask for permission, but your manager has the day-to-day sort of management authority to let him have access to it unless the council just wants to direct otherwise. So I think if your, the consensus is to let him, you know, have access to study it, Summer can take care of that. Just, and I appreciate the sensitivity of your time and expense and my involvement. If there's not a strong feeling on the council's part for me not to be involved, any proposal, I'll sure vet before it comes back to you and, and we'll, you know, discuss it with him ahead of time, so.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't had time to think about this is the thing. I mean, to me, is there not a lot of things? I always have the thing about starting a precedent, that if you allow anybody to do that, then it doesn't stop the next person to come along. And I'm kind of one that I'm not in a position, not knowing anything about this tonight. I would think there would be some legal things that we need to be considering before we make a decision to put it on Ms. Woodard to make that decision for us.
And I don't think, I think the cart is well before the horse if we're talking about what would you lease it to them for and what are the logistics of that. We're not anywhere near that. I think where we are right now is can they have permission to go on the property?
But then would we let the next person that came along next month that wanted to use it? Do we give them permission? That's what I'm saying. We are, would then not, would we not be starting a precedent that we need to know before we ever do it the first time? That's where I'm going.
I didn't know people couldn't go on that property. I thought it was open to the.
It's free access and one thing is the one bottom gate, but the top entry.
I'm sure. You just had to put a gate there.
Everything he's asked, he can do, just because he can do it.
Yeah.
And he has given us the courtesy of telling us what is on his mind. He may be coming back with a feasibility study and a request that we take action, but we're not there today. So I don't think we have to take any formal action. We just understand, he is telling us that he expects to be doing that and I don't think we have a huge reason just to absolutely tell him he can't. It's because he can do it, you can just do it because it's there.
Well, I, I welcome ideas. I mean, right now it's just sitting fallow. So if Jimbo wants to give us an idea or somebody else in the crowd wants to give us an idea and present it, the more ideas, the better.
We don't have any no trespassing signs on the property, do we?
Not since the property's been cleaned up and it's safe to travel.
That was a concern.
I think the cars knock them over whenever they park there.
I think the council's suggestion is appropriate that the Town Manager is responsible for overseeing the property of the town and making sure that things are acted legally and accordingly. And if there's any issue that comes up, she has the authority, I think, to stop any action whatsoever that might be going on. But it's good that Mister Ledford came and told us what he would like to look at doing, but like you say, Joe, there's really no action that I think that we could take at this point in time until there's something actionable. Right now, he's free to go on the property unless we, unless we refuse him access to it and we're basically allowing the manager to make that decision. Is that where we are?
I think so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Okay. Item B, 6B, purchase contract for property located at 311 Clyde Street. Manager Woodard and Counselor, y'all are up.
Mister Mayor, just before the council discusses either or both of these items, I just want to let you know, you do have the ability to go into closed session and discuss terms. Obviously, we feel like we've got the terms we proposed to you. You've got the contracts in the, in the agenda packet. So fully ready to discuss both of these matters with you in open session. I just want you to know, you do have the option to go into closed session and discuss terms if you, if you feel it's necessary.
Personally, if there's no compelling reason to go into closed session, I don't think we should.
And I agree and I think that's why we tended to work, let's just do this in the open. I drafted both of these contracts. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about them. They both are for acquisition of these two pieces of property that we discussed at your last meeting and happy to answer any questions about it.
Any questions from the board?
Maybe for the sake of the public, we could describe briefly what they are?
Sure. So 311 Clyde Street is a parcel of, about a half acre that adjoins your East Franklin Water Towers. The seller in that matter was willing to sell it to the town for basically tax value. We think that that's most generous and, and, you know, it's got a clear advantage to the town in terms of later development because you can now expand your, your water capacity for that side of town eventually. So that was much appreciated. This contract, as well as the other one, are structured such that they're fully signed up, but contingent on your action to approve it. So this, you are the last word on, on approval of both of these. 196 West Palmer Street is what we all think of as the old Texaco property.
Can we do them separately? Sorry.
To vote on? Yeah, absolutely. And, and if you want to, I'll stop talking about 196 and just discuss 311 Clyde Street. Very happy to answer any other questions you have about it.
Yeah, let's, let's take it now. If there's any questions.
I'm moved to approve 311 Clyde Street.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to just clarify one thing. This is part of our water and sewer system.
Yes, sir.
The property that's going to be in addition to our water and sewer system is going to be paid for out of revenues received, excess revenues or additional revenues that we have within the water and sewer system. So it's not going to require any local tax money to actually pay for this property.
Yeah. Yeah. It sure helps the town out.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, let's look at six.
We didn't vote, Mister Mayor, by the way.
Yeah, we did. I thought we did.
No, it was, I'm rushing to say.
You were talking, you had your hands up.
Well, some already had your hands up.
We had our hands up.
Well, I'll vote in favor of this as well.
All right, yeah.
I think it's unanimous.
Okay, the next item then is the contract for property located at 196 West Palmer Street. Counselor and Madam Manager?
Yes, Mister Mayor, again, this is what everybody thinks of as the old Texaco property down across from the old Ingles in town, corner of Maple and, and West Palmer Streets. Again, sort of the same contract substantively, except for obviously the, the purchase amount. We did negotiate that and you can see what we came up with. Happy to answer any questions about it, but we think in particular, the, the utility of the town is, is very significant there. It's sort of an entry corridor. It is located in the midst of your fire department and police department buildings, so it completes the corner there. You need to have a sewer line rerouted in that area and this would allow us to do that without any additional acquisition of right-of-way or anything. And sidewalks can be completed around the corner there where there, if there's anything there, it's not much. So, you know, it's, it's an extraordinary value to the town, I think, in terms of its utility moving forward.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll take a look. Yes, sir.
Just one point. I think, appreciate the council and Town Managers' work on this. I think they've done an excellent job. The only thing I'd point out too, one of the questions that came up, is this property having environmental issues that haven't been addressed? And we have been assured, I think, that, that all the environmental issues associated with underground storage tanks and so forth have been resolved and that will not be a problem for use of the property.
I appreciate that, Jack, and thank you for the reminder. Yes, there was a spill. It's, you know, it was an old gas station property. I don't think there are many around that didn't have some kind of need for remediation. They do have a letter of no further action from Deener, which is about as clean a bill of health as you can get from them. It says, you know, you had some petroleum spill, it's been adequately remediated. The one thing it can't have is a residential water source, you know, you couldn't have a drinking well under it because, and I think it's their sort of permanent solution to say, just, you know, we'll say you cleaned up the property well enough, just promise us you're not going to use it for drinking water and you can stop monitoring it. So that's obviously not something we need it for anyway.
Further questions? All right, I'll close. Okay.
I'm, I'm having a hard time thinking that it's really worth the price that we're offering to pay for it to the average, to the average person. And that's, that's just my, I'm not an appraiser. I'd have a harder time if somebody came and bought it at that price or a lower price. We, we were a little bit hands-free, I think, because we had dealt with it before and there were some numbers around and we're the town and what have you, but it's a piece of land which the town uniquely needs for its police and its fire. And then we'll own it for enough years where the sting of paying what I think might be a dollar or two more will probably wear off easily along the way. So I'm in favor of that purpose.
Any further questions? If not, I'll end the motion.
That we buy.
That you buy. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor and I'm going to count hands.
Discussion first. Picking back on what Joe just said, I, I understand we're, it's uniquely suited to us, but I think we're, I think a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is well over market value for the property. Go ahead, Bob.
Would you want to withdraw? Are you in favor or against it?
We're about to vote.
I thought we just voted. All right, all in favor of the motion as presented? All opposed? All right. It's a four and one vote, Mister Clark.
You can't go on that property.
That's right.
I'll take Jimbo with me.
Jimbo's on my security detail, aren't you, Jimbo? All right. Update on Town of Franklin Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Mister Setser, front and center, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Counsel. I have, let me just say, I want to get a slide. So just want to give you an update on where we're at on the comprehensive plan. Last week, we held our fifth steering committee meeting and with that, the steering committee reviewed the, since the first draft, full draft of the comprehensive plan. And with that, we have, I'm going to go over the continued process over the next couple of months because there's going to be, there's going to be a lot going on and I wanted to run this by you and make sure the board was aware of the schedule and the process of moving forward with it. So the steering committee has until Wednesday to give any final comments, concerns to me so I can give over to the consultants so they can make any changes. And then once they do that, next week, we're going to, it will then go out on the agenda for the planning board. And then looking at that time, it'll also go up on the, the website that we made for the comprehensive plan, which is franklantownplan.com. So moving forward, so the planning board will review it on February the 17th at their regular scheduled planning board meeting. And for them to review it, look over it and then really plan on them, they can look over, maybe have some, if they have any major issues, they can bring it up, but then not intending on them to have any final say on it that day. And then planning on either at the end of February or the first of March, having a open house with like a presentation with the consultants who'll come. We're still locked down wherever we want to have that. We don't know if this is going to be big enough space for it. But having a public comment period, another public comment period of the full draft, which anybody's welcome to come to. And then any changes that might come from And then, any changes that might come from that, the people, maybe some more recommendations from the public, tweak it a little bit more, and then go back to planning board at their March meeting. Only thing that we're looking at, and I'll have to ask John to make sure I'm right on my dates and time here, looking for potentially, planning board, getting a recommendation from planning board in March, but then having a hearing for it in the town council meeting in April. So, we would need to set a hearing in March, even though they haven't adopted it, but with the intention of them for planning board being through, looking through it at their March meeting prior to April. So, then have a full presentation to the town council in April, then give the town council a little time to mull it over for maybe a month, and look maybe for an adoption in May. Because what I was looking for, I think, was a best way moving forward, if that's the town council will, or if you see any issues with that schedule. Trying to keep it off of the June meeting because that's when you're going to get into budget, and didn't really want you to have a budget and a comprehensive plan on the same night. And also the end of June, one of the consultant's contracts up as well. So, and David's on the steering committee. He's the town council personnel on the steering committee. I don't know if he wants to add anything, but we discussed it moving forward.
Yeah, I think it's good. So far, so good?
Yeah. The plan's looking really good. There've been just a few minor changes. Some of the steering committee members have sent me in the last few days, just a few little typos, a little critical issues, but we'll get those changed and hopefully have it up for everybody to see by next week. For the planning board.
I think the town is going to end up being really pleased with what we'll get out of this product and the fact that we also now, because there has been a complete redo of the land use statute, it requires us to really revamp everything we have and make sure it's all up to snuff under what will be state law at the end of this calendar year, the timing of this couldn't have been any better. And now, we have the sort of foundational, you know, document reviewed and in place to now then get to the nuts and bolts of what the ins and outs of how we use that one is. So, it's all coming together in a really good fashion.
Now, John, tell me if I'm wrong, at the April meeting, if the town council wanted to adopt it, I'm pretty sure they could. But if you want to take it, listen to Cook comment and weigh on that, then you can adopt it in May.
And I don't think there's any reason to rush it. So, I would say...
Just one question, I'm not very clear. When would a document be available that the public wanted to look at, not just to the committees, but that the public wanted to see what's being proposed as far as, before it's actually adopted? When do you estimate that we would have a draft for public review? Is that April or March?
No, probably, hopefully, next week. End of next week, I'm hoping to have it, if we get everything done. Because end of next week, I have to put it on the planning board's agenda, so I've got to have it before that because I want them to see it, you know, the weekend before the meeting, be reading it. They don't need to get to the day of the meeting and try to read a hundred pages of document.
Does that require us to put a public notice in the local paper that it's available for public inspection? Is that required?
I don't think for the draft it does. And now, obviously, when we get to the public hearing, it will be, but not for the draft of the planning board. I mean, we put, it'll be on the web, we'll put something on the website, say it's on there. We've got some, everybody's been involved. We've got an email list of people that signed up for the public meeting we've had prior back when we had the charrette. We'll send it to them, say, hey, it's on there. You can download it and you can read it, the draft. We can put it on our Facebook. I mean, we can put it out there with a few notes there.
I know it's a daunting task to put together something like this, and appreciate your work and the work of the committee for putting this together and trying to look ahead, and so, thank you very much.
Steering committee's been great. There's a, we got a good group, and they've really dived into it and has been picking through things and, you know, changing things and lots of different ideas.
There's a lot of good things, a broad spectrum of different type stuff and stuff that is actually actionable, I think.
It's not just all about zoning. I mean, it's, there's everything about jobs and poverty and housing and, I mean, broadband. I mean, you've got, we had, we talked about broadband for an hour the other night.
I was just going to say, the planning board meeting, of course, is open to the public. People want to see it.
Yeah, that'll be, the planning board meeting will be the first present, since the presentation that the consultants and I will make in April will be, the first will be at the planning board meeting on the 17th.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Good show. Thank you. Okay, update on minimum housing complaint at 18 Wilkie Street. You're still up, sir?
Yes, so, I've got a timeline here. Let me get it out. Also, you know, time to time, we run into these minimum housing complaints around town, a number of different houses or structures. So, this complaint, this obviously is at 18 Wilkie Street, which is the house at the corner of Wilkie Street and Old Mercy Road, right there across from now Corbin Dental and Radio Shack. Many people know about this house and been how it's looked for years. So, back, this all started back on September the 5th, 2019. We received seven complaints from neighbor residents about the house and the condition of it, minimum housing complaint. After receiving those on, receiving those complaints per our minimum housing ordinance, I served an administrative search warrant on the property and went to inspect the property to see what their complaints were, you know, truthful and any other further action was warranted. Served that on the September 11th of 19. And then, after inspecting the property, which I've got some photos here, I'll kind of thumb through as well. You can see that as of, this was the day, that day on September 11th. You see, there was a wide variety of abandoned cars and numerous trash, and the house was in, there was a lot of rotten sections on the house, roof was leaking in many places, multiple broken windows. The house at the time was, didn't have any power, or they had power, but it'd been disconnected. They hadn't paid their power bill. And you see the conditions that were inside the house, where it's just more broken windows, roof is leaking, and so on. There's a power cord where they actually been trying to steal power from some of the neighbors that they've been complaining about. So, but after visiting the property on the 12th, mailed a notice to the property owner to set a hearing to meet with me, set that hearing for the 23rd of September, met with the property owner, we went over the house and the conditions and everything, went over all the pictures. And then, after that, I mailed a determination on the 25th, which deemed the house to be dilapidated and requiring it to be removed. At the time, the house was only valued at 3,3660 dollars was all the house was valued at, not separate from the property. Land value is around 45,000. So, the property owner received a letter on the 30th of September. At that time, in that letter, granted a, or questioned a 45-day for the house to be removed. We could go up to 90 days at a max, the minimum housing ordinance is, allows. Spoke with the property owner multiple times, even somebody that worked for him, explaining everything, process. Actually, granted an extension once because they were working on it, they were cleaning it up, they were, they were working on the house, just, you know, cleaning. They've got rid of a lot of cars and a lot of little sheds. This is the as of today in this picture. But since then, as of today, property owner's never done an eviction notice of the people that have property in there, and since cleanup has stopped since around Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, there really hasn't been more activity on it. So, they've exceeded their 90 days, and like I said, I spoke to her by phone, spoke to them in person, she's come to the office many times, tried to explain the whole process and what needed to be done. So, I'm just kind of, we've got to the point where it's to, town council needs to direct Mr. Henning to make any further steps because we're at a point where we haven't, I can't get any further with it, and obviously, the complaint, the people that made the complaints, they're asking as well, want to see action done.
This property owner occupied the property, or is it someone living there now?
Nobody lives there. She does not occupy. That's one thing in our minimum housing. If it was owner occupied, our ordinance wouldn't apply, but she was a rented property, which she wasn't, hadn't got rented in over a year either from the people that were living there.
So, it's unoccupied now?
Yeah, been occupied since, about since the process started, middle of it.
Mr. Gray?
This is what I was going to ask.
So, council members, in order to, you have a draft resolution that just summarizes exactly what Justin just told you has been the process. The next step in the minimum housing process, if you want to actually get this remediated, is to author, to adopt this resolution and authorize me to go file suit. And so, that's the purpose of that. I know it's just in front of you tonight, but it's virtually verbatim what Justin just told you. So, I would recommend you go ahead and adopt that resolution, and I'll proceed.
If you file suit, what's, and the court agrees with the town, what's the final outcome? What are they going to be?
Well, that we've given, I mean, what we're asking the court for is an order that the person go demolish it. What we have found sometimes is what they, the ones we've had easier success with, they don't answer, and we wind up with a default order that says the town can go do it, and then there's a statute that lets us have a lien in the amount of the proceeds that we then foreclose and recon some money if it comes to that. But as always, we're trying to get, you know, voluntary...
Rights.
Since this process has been going on, the property owner has went to the tax office and showed that the power's been disconnected and has since had it, the home reevaluated, and it's only now valued at 690 dollars.
Any further questions from the board and Mr. Sutscher? Okay, so I guess the next thing to do is to decide if we're going to adopt this resolution. Someone want to make a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt, if that's presented.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? All right, if there's any further discussion?
I do have a question. Does this leave room that if somebody wanted to actually invest in the house and bring it up to current codes, this would allow that?
Yes.
But if nobody is going to take action on it?
Correct.
And we win the lawsuit, we will have the ability to demolish it?
Yes.
Further questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Collins, do you folks, okay, good. All right, unanimous, Mr. Clark. Discussion on the speed limit reduction request along Bellevue Park Road. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. One shout before you tonight is somewhat of a unique request. Spoke to the homeowner that lives at 120 Bellevue Park, Mr. Sam Fisk, in reference to lowering the speed limit. He has now contacted administration along with the police department on numerous occasions. Upon investigation, though, the town has determined that Bellevue Road is, of course, an NC DOT road, which is owned and maintained by them. However, he is requesting that the town ask DOT or request NC DOT that they lower the speed limit. It's currently 35 to 25 miles per hour out there. I would like to turn it over to Chief Adams, just because I know we've been out there looking into it because it is within side of the city limits, and kind of let him touch on any issues he saw. If you think 35 is appropriate, kind of give some guidance on our end, what you think council should consider tonight.
That's some complaints about the speakers. I guess the main concern is people dropping their children off at the daycare that church could bring in the road down there. Place just started recently. Never even knew that was part of town that we patrolled or, we don't patrol it, but somehow it was overlay of the bypass. We can work wrecks there. Mine or something from 2009, Justin.
Whenever the town was...
Whenever the town adopted the bypass there. Lowering it to 25 may or may not reduce complaints, but we've been monitoring it, having officers run radar up there. Very little speeding, and of course, the officers out there mark car, they're not going to speed, but I don't think it'd be an issue if they do reduce it to 25.
And again, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you, Chief. This is just the town requesting DOT because DOT can easily tell us no. But the homeowner's been pretty adamant, so wanted just to bring that before you.
From owner or owners, plural?
Owner.
Would there be any downside to sending that letter?
It's up to the DOT to make the final decision. All we would do is recommend, based on the background of the police chief's recommendation, is up to them, and they may have and probably do a system for setting speed limits based on the number of cars, schools, churches, so forth. And they may plug it into their system and say it doesn't fit, or it does fit, but the final decision, I'm sure, will be up in part transportation.
And we just recommend that letter acknowledge that we realize it's not, I just want to document it, this is not our decision, and we're just going to weigh in on that.
Do we need to take a vote on it, or just anybody got any objection?
I don't see anything wrong, I don't see anything with passing that recommendation on if the board's a citizen, trying to do that.
Anybody against it? I don't hear anybody against it, so, okay. Discussion on proposals for NC DOT utility project R 5734B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Everybody remember that code, it's going to be a real...
Leave me a trouble.
Yeah. This item is largely my fault that we're here. This project is, has to do with the widening, the further widening of 441 south of Wide Horizon. The DOT has a program by which if you secure the engineering costs and the upfront labor costs to relocate, now it's non-betterment, so it's just relocating your existing facilities out of the way of their expansion project of 441, then they reimburse every penny of it. They were of the opinion, we didn't have to go through an RFQ process in order to determine who would be our engineer for it, but that's just not what the statute's saying. And so, by my insistence, we did go through an RFQ process. Nathaniel and Summer and I interviewed all of your engineers that proposed for it, and at this point, we're comfortable telling you that Withers Ravanell is well qualified and has given you a good proposal for it. So, that's before you, if you approve that, they will begin work on the design of where those facilities have to get moved, and it's not as simple as just, you know, just move them over. There's a lot of engineering that will have to go into it. And then, I think DOT takes on the bidding aspects of it from there on, but we would continue to provide engineering oversight through these folks to make sure that we are getting built what we think we're getting built through this process and getting a good system. We may also, as they're designing this, be coming back to you for some things that we may want to kind of add on that are good for growth. You know, places where we see, and the engineers, it'd be their recommendations to say, you might be growing in this direction and think about stubbing out here, maybe adding a little more robustness to the water or sewer facilities in this area. So, that's something to be on the lookout for. I'm sorry, is there anything I'm missing?
No, it's, again, you know, this is, be a great, great start for the town just because it allows us to be able, at the expense of NC DOT, be able to have our kind of own engineering firm out there with eyes on the ground, making sure that our utilities are relocated up to town standards and specs, again, at no cost to the town. I mean, it's truly a win-win in this situation.
Are we, as a town, have the upfront of the cost of... Are we, does the town have the upfront of the cost of engineering work and then get reimbursed by the DOT? As you know, how long that takes to get to that point?
We don't, because again, this project could be anywhere from three to five years in length, so it would be over a period of time. So I know our finance officer and I have looked at, maybe looking at a capital project, just to be able to keep it clean for audit purposes.
A multi-year kind of one, yeah.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other utilities that could be buried along with it, such as future broadband, that type of thing?
So it'd be, I think the, and Nathaniel could probably weigh in on this too, but I think if another provider wanted to get in to this location as it happened, they probably can.
I've read recommendations that you should have space when you do underground utilities that.
Well, and there definitely is coordination to be, to be done with that, because the gas line also has to be redone and there may be, I don't know what else there would be buried, but there's at least that too, that there's a lot of moving pieces, you know, including, including that. So it could be.
Could we install dark fiber and then if a provider wanted to tap onto it, charge them the fee?
We can look at it.
We can look into it.
Yeah, and I don't know whether Withers Ravenel's ready to do that kind of thing, but that's, it would take hefty engineering, you know.
Yeah. There's just been a lot of talks statewide about municipalities putting dark fiber in when they do sewer and water line relocations. It doesn't cost much, I don't think. I don't know what dark fiber costs. Do you know? I don't either. Okay, did you have questions?
Yeah, are we asking them to keep in mind the potential of a future sidewalk along that stretch of road?
Yes, I mean, I think what we're, we still intend to try to, and that, that could have happened anyway without the, they could have taken this into consideration. We're still going to work through the process with DOT to be clear on what voluntary annexation of that area would look like to give us the ability to have that project go through, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions on that? It doesn't require a vote?
Just one, just one comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could, that DOT is probably under this, under this replacement clause, is this the law that they have, if you're under 10,000 people, they have to pay the full cost of relocating.
Right.
But they're going to say, we're only going to pay for what's actually there. If you've added anything else to that, I think that's going to be on our dime.
Yeah, well.
That's true. And, and one of the things that we worked through with, with all of the folks that responded to RFQ was, tell us about your experience with trying to balance out what's, and argue for us, because that's one thing we wanted to do, is go to DOT saying, yeah, this is not going in exactly the same place and it's going to require some more buildup and some different equipment, but have the same functionalities they had before. This is not a betterment. This is exactly what they, you know, the same, you're just making them whole, even if it's a little more costly than just a straight line. So that's something we definitely did emphasize.
Mr. Attorney, you want to give us a motion to vote on tonight?
Yes, sir. It would be to award the proposed engineering services to Withers Ravenel and to a further contract as presented.
Okay, any further? Okay, second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, discussion on interim police chief appointment. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've had some interesting changes the last couple of weeks, but I think it's, it's for a great promotion and opportunity for our current police chief. Chief David Adams did submit his intention to resign from the town of Franklin effective February 14th of 2020. He'll be taking a position as the chief of police for the town of Waynesville. And with that, tonight, what we've laid out before you is kind of just a proposed process for how the town may move forward and the selection of a candidate to fulfill that position. In the meantime though, as many of us around this table and the audience know, we will need to appoint an interim police chief. The process we're looking at is probably going to take at least 90 days, give or take, could be a little bit longer. So we'll need an individual to fulfill that role. In the meantime, and I would like to present before the board tonight, a gentleman who's been with Franklin Police Department for 20-plus years and has served many different capacities, from patrol officer to sergeant to detective, and most recent rank is captain. And with that, I would like to suggest that tonight, the interim police chief position be appointed to Danny Bates.
Does that require a motion or just approval or just information?
I think that's the appointment responsibility, it falls to the town manager. The rest of the board has an objection.
It does, that's correct.
No objection from me.
Yeah, thank you.
No objection.
I'd like to, I just would like to say thank you, Danny, for all the years you've given the town and the job you've done.
If I may, I would like to say thank you to the board, Madam Manager, for your consideration in appointing me the interim chief. I look forward to the opportunity to serve each and every one of you and work with you and serve the community. Also, I'd say thank you to Chief Adams, while he's been here, he's been very supportive of PD, as well as me and the other officers, and I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on strategic planning session, that's me. Ladies and gentlemen, I sent you an email today laying out a proposal from the North County League of Municipalities to conduct a strategic planning board retreat for us. They're very astute to municipalities particularly. And what I'd like to ask the board tonight, to see if there would be any objection on having this retreat, our training, our strategic planning, either on February the 21st and the 22nd, or just on the 22nd. The 21st is a Friday. We could meet, have dinner, and then a couple of hours session, and then a half, a three-fourths a day on Saturday, or we could do it all day on Saturday, if it's the pleasure of the board to do that on the 22nd. I think a full day would probably suffice, starting in the morning, say about 8:00 in this boardroom, where we've got all the audiovisual equipment they require. So what's the pleasure of the board on, on doing this? Y'all have a chance to read over the proposal about the three to five year, or whether we want a shorter plan of projecting into the future with strategic plans?
I didn't see that.
I didn't get the email either.
You didn't?
I mean, it may have come, I didn't see. How much, what's the cost of it?
It probably rung between $800 and $1,000. That would include everything, meals, the whole nine yards, their travel, everything. So, but it would cost about the same to put it on somewhere else here in Franklin, just for the rent of a, of a place to meet.
Like, the cost of the facilitators through the league?
That's everything.
Okay. That's everything, meaning for the travel to get the facilitator here?
That was what you said, around about $1,000?
Any charge for region A facilitator?
No, but they're not municipal oriented like the league is.
Well, you know, I, I think we kind of know what we need to talk about. I'm not sure we have to be led too far down the road myself now. And I would really like for us to have a, a pre-meeting on the Friday night with the dinner and then have a meeting at whatever, what it takes on Saturday. But that's just me, I'm.
The Friday, Saturday worked really well last time. The Friday evening, we were able to relax, eat dinner, go over some stuff, and then Saturday we got down to nuts and bolts.
I'm not sure what process y'all have used before, but usually if you have a one-day retreat, you spend the first couple of hours setting your agenda for what you're going to do the rest of the day, and it wouldn't have an opportunity if you did that the night before, so that when you're ready to meet that next morning, you're ready to hit the ground. And I do, I addressed those issues that you brought up the evening before. I think that would be a, a good idea, to save some time, I think.
I'd like to ask, if you would, to go over, if you would, I did send it to everybody.
Yeah, I just got it.
Well, I just sent it today, this morning. I got it from the league this morning. I would strongly urge the board to consider letting the League of Municipalities conduct this though, because they already have sort of a skeleton outline of what, what a municipality needs to be looking at. And of course, you know, the league has just really started coming west for us and.
Is that different from our $3,000 somewhere? Was that, Madam?
I think that was before we started doing some negotiation.
Can I have you?
Arm twisting and, I know something that I'm not going to tell unless.
If I can remember correctly, we discussed it last meeting, I think we were talking about maybe starting early on Saturday, about an 8:00 AM start, wrap up and left for lunch.
Yeah. Would that suit y'all?
Yeah.
Okay. And any objection to doing it here, since we're already set up for it with the audiovisuals and everything?
For Saturday, but not Friday night.
Well, you want to do it Friday night?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, we're talking about maybe doing it at Mill Creek possibly, or local bed and breakfast that would have us to feed us. I think we need that Friday night, even if we start early on Saturday, I think we need that Friday night, I want it.
Well, we did a little check.
And, and we can do that, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council. A couple options, I have reached out to Cat Creek. I've unfortunately not heard anything back just yet, but that's not to say we won't. I did follow up with Mill Creek today. Mill Creek's kind of, they don't really do rentals, but they said in the town's case, they would look at doing a rental on a Friday night. Their cost would be just for the rental, about $800. But also, I've reached out to Connie Gruberman at B&amp;B. She said that's something if the town was interested in. I gave her some timeframes. She could look at that, I'm not certain on the cost though, or I mean, if you wanted to do a restaurant downtown, it's whatever the board wants, I can look into it.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Collins, is, is there an objection to doing it in here?
There's an objection to do it in here two days. I want to have a Friday night and a Saturday. I want to have a retreat somewhere besides here. I'm not going to raise that objection if we're here on Saturday. I want to go somewhere else on Friday night.
What, I mean, when we've got the facility, I don't think I'm following why you want to go somewhere else.
It disarms people so that we're not in a formal environment at each other's throat, like sometimes we are. Like last time we said at the J C's Park, it was catered, that's perfectly acceptable. I mean, if we find an alternative to that, that's also perfectly acceptable. But yes, I, two days is good, Friday and Saturday's good.
Yeah.
Not being in this room is best for all of our health, for at least that Friday night session.
Okay, are you willing for the town to pay what it would cost?
I would rather the town invest there than I have the extra money to bring somebody in as a facilitator from the league. That's where my priorities are.
You just don't want to make you do it.
I'm not sure what, you just asked me.
Yeah.
What, did you just ask me?
If you, I'm not sure you really want to do it, period.
I've always suggested we need to have a retreat type thing.
We've got, we've got one laid out here in front of us.
Your suggestion?
That's true, and that's, that makes it wrong.
And if we're, if we're three to three, then it could be a vote to tie it. But I, we're here, it's the board's retreat, and I'm suggesting that if we have it here on Saturday, which I am not really anxious to do, but I do understand there's a rationale for it, I do want to have a little something different on the Friday evening before. Yeah, that's amazing.
Little, little less formal, if you have it at a restaurant or someplace where you normally just sit and eat and talk, I guess that's sort of what you're getting at.
Well, we've got the media to, you know, it's got to be over.
The media's always going to be there.
I'm a cheap day. I'm a cheap day.
Y'all want to go to dinner with us?
Yeah, we want to go to dinner.
Yeah, I only am advocating for fancy dinner, just, last time it was really, really loose and we all actually liked each other and we said, we should do this more than a year.
Would you want to go back to the Memorial Park again? We can do it.
I'm fine with that. If there's another option, I'm fine with that too.
What about, what about this proposal, the Memorial Park Friday night?
Well, why don't we see what Connie, what kind of price and what kind of a deal she offers?
Well, can we nail down that we'll do it on the 21st?
22nd.
21st and 22nd, or the, the, the Friday night will be the 21st, and can we nail down that we'll have the big part of the training in here on the 22nd?
Well, only training, but.
Well, strategic plan.
Yes.
Times, 8:00 Saturday morning, 6:00 Friday evening, 5:30 Friday evening?
That's up to y'all. I've got all the time in the world on the 21st and 22nd.
I think we nailed down the two days.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but you know, we don't like to nail down the time tonight, I don't think, as long as we've got Friday evening and Saturday committed.
For work schedule's sake, I mean, a nice window would be good. I mean, it's going to be after work on Friday, early on Saturday, I'm fine with that. I mean, I've got an arranged commitment.
You're right, you're right.
All right, you want to find out what Ms. Gruberman, Connie would charge us and we'll email it out?
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Council, what I'm, what I'm hearing tonight is on Friday, February 21st, I will, maybe we'll set a time, but we'll anticipate maybe like from 5:00 to 8:00 hosting at a venue in town. I will reach out to Ms. Gruberman, since she said there she could accommodate, see what we can do there. And then on Friday, or excuse me, on Saturday, February 22nd, we'll have the league, Mayor Scott and I can reach out to the league to have the facilitator here for an 8:00 AM session.
For how long? Because it sounds to me more like what we're going to do on Friday night is going to be a social rather than strategic planning. So should I talk to the league about having all day Saturday?
I thought the facilitator would be with us on Friday, because that's.
Well, I did, but I don't know how we're going to set up to do it at Ms., at Connie's place, I don't know. Does she have audiovisual equipment?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor.
I don't either, which we do have here.
If we're just talking about our.
Agenda.
Agenda, we don't need AV for that, do we?
I think, I think you do.
On Friday.
I think what we need, I think everybody seems to be in, in agreement that we ought to do it on Friday night and Saturday, on the 21st and 22nd. And the only, the only confusion is what we're going to do for dinner on Friday night. And I think we'll have to leave it up to the town managers to work out. We have plenty of time between now and then, and she could work out something that would work, accommodate us on Friday night, you know, that may be here, maybe someplace else, but give her, give her some options.
Ms. Horton, you were here for the essentials and it worked out beautifully. It really did. It worked out tremendously.
The only other moving part is the moderator, if we have a paid moderator, if we have a non-paid moderator. That's the only other moving part, right?
Whatever you want to do, it's up to this board.
I'm just asking for clarity, I think Jack nailed it, what we need to do.
I have made my pitch that the league is in this business, they do this statewide. If you don't want them, say so. I can send them an email.
Is the negotiation for the two days or the one?
It doesn't matter. They know about both.
For the same price.
The half a day on Friday.
For the same price.
Yeah, and for the Saturday thing. The league's picking up some of the expenses for their.
I don't have any objection to the league. I think this is good to get the people out of Raleigh to know where western North Carolina is once in a while, because, you know, we're just as important here as they are down in the Piedmont or the East Coast. So it's good to get them out here, and I think they really enjoyed and appreciated having the essentials class here in Franklin for the western counties, the cities, or other towns here in, in, in the last month, couple of months. So I, I think we probably ought to go ahead and give the league an opportunity to do this out here at the civic, civic works. And, and if it's the same price for Friday and Saturday, I think they ought to sit in with us on Friday night, so they'll get an idea of where we're going come 8:00 Saturday morning.
And then they could probably wind up around a little after, or at lunchtime on Saturday?
Depends on how long, or how long-winded we are, I guess.
Really? I can control, can control that. Jack, you and I go way back together.
We do, we do.
Absolutely, we do.
I think that's.
Okay, so where are we? Let's, let's.
I think, I think if, if, if the board's in agreement then to do Friday night and Saturday, the 21st and 22nd, and ask the league to facilitate for us at the negotiated prices you talked about, and have the town managers to work out the details on the evening meal.
Okay.
Would that work?
I second that.
Thank you.
And we can work out details, we can have some donuts here Saturday morning.
And, or do we just need to submit ideas, what we want to talk about to?
I'm going to send you a outline of things to check off, so that we can get some kind of order of what we're going to be discussing. Okay, anything else? Did we settle on that?
That's a motion, and the second, we just needed some formal vote there, Mayor.
Okay, all right, make the motion, Mr.
He did.
I made a motion and David seconded it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Takes care of that. All right. Thank y'all. Discussion on data breach policy. Y'all want to take five minutes real quick like we've been sitting here for an hour and a half? Uh, let's take five minutes and I will call it down. I got a stopwatch right here. Take five.
We have to go into closed session?
No, we have no closing. Start, we finish. Okay.
We just talked and you weren't...
Okay, let's come back to order. Uh, the next item legal here, a discussion on data breach policy. Uh, Counsel, I think you're going to bring this to our attention.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Mayor, and actually it's, it's been in front of you. It's, it's actually, I know, I know you've all read it eagerly and have lots and lots of questions and things you've highlighted and want to talk through and philosophize about, but if not, uh, it is ready for approval as a policy, happy to answer any questions you've got about it.
That's why I made that motion earlier about the minutes. I wanted you to know I read something and it was the minutes.
We noted that. It has been duly noted that Ms. Mashman read the minutes.
We have to do the state of breach policy, right?
You basically have to do it, yes.
By the state is mandating it?
Yes, there's now a state law that says you have to do it and there are liability reasons to get it in place. But you also have got insurance to cover too, which is good, but this, this puts the rubber on the road.
You need a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second?
As presented.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, you got your resolution there. Uh, amendment to dental amalgam implementation policy.
Trick question's at the end.
This better be good.
Now, have you changed professions on us or just what's going on here?
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, what you have before you tonight is, um, basically an amendment to your existing policy. Um, these are some state requirements that DEQs passed down. There's a letter in your packet. Um, actually, we have to submit this by February 14th, 2020. Um, it's just some final rulings and different oversight. Um, I know our wastewater treatment plant operator, uh, Mr. Bill Deals looked over this and, um, he's comfortable with these suggestions because we don't really have much of a choice, but I know this is just as fun reading as the, uh, data breach policy was, so...
We try to entertain.
Something to think about for your retreat, there's a topic of policies that I do want you to give some thought to. There are, where things are just flat out required by law, I do think that there's a role and this is something you can get into policy and say the manager's got authority to go ahead and adopt these things as, as our working rules and just inform the, the council about it after the fact. So this, this would be a good example where you don't have to worry about the dental amalgam, whatever it is.
But we want to know how smart she is. She understands all of these things.
Mr. Deal is copacetic with this and he's able to perform this?
We are.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Motion to adopt as presented?
As, as an amendment. Okay. Second, all in, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the next item, uh, who's presenting this? Uh, Counselor, uh, okay, Madam Manager?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Just kind of wanted to give the board an update, something to be looking for, uh, probably at your March meeting. One thing, um, that the county, I believe, is going to be looking at, at their agenda next week is maybe the possibility of some partnership opportunities for a drug, um, for a substance abuse position. And this may be something that they'll be proposing for the town to maybe partner with. Um, I know myself and Mr. Henning have been working with Mr. Roland and Mr. Jones on the legal end, uh, but just kind of wanted to update the board. I know that we had said some, set aside some funding if this opportunity ever came. Um, again, this would, this would give us a little bit more detail because we don't have that before you tonight, but just wanted to update the board to be looking for a little bit more detail on this matter at your March meeting.
Okay, so anything that we need to do, motion or anything? It's just information only? Okay.
Oh, that item, yes, sir.
It's just information only?
Right, yes.
All right, the, uh, under announcements?
No, Mr. Mayor, sorry, we did pull that one item out of, uh, the consent agenda and I do need to get the council...
Oh, gosh, I forgot about that. Thank you, uh, yeah.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Mayor, this is that, the lawsuit on the minimum housing code that you had instituted on the Houston property at, uh, corner of, um, Bidwell Street. It is, um, what has happened, and I informed the council of it in a, in a memorandum email that there's a copy of in front of you. The property owner, uh, followed up and, and did what was necessary to bring it into minimum compliance with the code. And so, you know, Justin's reexamination of it finds that it, it takes all the boxes at this point. Since there were in the November meeting, there were, there was quite a bit of community interest from down there about wherever we were in that process. I talked to a couple of different folks that, that live in that area and told them there's a possibility that, you know, with enough plywood, you can go fix the, the problems that were there and that it would become, you know, watertight and not permit rodents and not permit people and all of the various things that, that the minimum housing code requires. I told them, was careful to tell them, it won't necessarily be real pretty and I don't, we don't have an ordinance that makes you make it real pretty. Um, but that, uh, that is what has happened now. It is now in a state where there's not, not a viable lawsuit in it. They have, they have done enough to pass into the minimum housing code. I don't have authority, it's your, it's the town's lawsuit. And so, what I'm asking you for is the direction to go ahead and, and dismiss it. Uh, it's a dismissal, voluntary dismissal with prejudice, which means we don't plan, we don't plan on reinstituting it, but if the property, what I want you to know is your code's not going anywhere, if the property does become non-compliant again, we can always restart that process. But this is what voluntary compliance looks like sometimes that we get, we get folks...
The with prejudice just gives me pause. Generally speaking, it's a cause of action, you can't raise up the flagpole again. But that's not the case here?
The issue, because they're now in compliance, the issues that we have right now would be stale anyway. So the restarting of the process would have Justin documenting, okay, you, and one of the things we're going to make clear to him as we do this is you've got untreated plywood out there that isn't going to last forever and we may well wind up in the same place in a couple of years, but we would restart the process and, and we also want to leave open the possibility that they let it get all the way to, to dilapidated and it needs to come down at that point if we weren't there.
Is that with prejudice, is that still negotiable? Because I don't, I really am troubled by that. Especially if you suggest that it, it really doesn't mean that much to either side. It does to me because I just know lawyers, look Judge, it said with prejudice, here they are six months later. Well, it's a new cause of action Judge, well, I, I, I mean, I've just, I don't like to see that, you know, but it may be in this case it's warranted, but I'd like for you to try to...
If your direction to me is to dismiss it without prejudice or with, I'm sorry, yeah, without prejudice, I don't mind a bit to do that. And if that's...
So it's going to be dismissed, it's not a consent judgment that you all are really negotiating?
It's not.
Right. I prefer...
The, the other thing I am asking you to do, by the way, is to go ahead, because we wanted to be able to explain this to folks, is, is to authorize us to release this. This also, you know, it's a privileged communication I've sent you here, but please also release it as you do this.
All right, I thought I knew what y'all were talking about, but y'all just blew my mind. Without prejudice means we can bring it up again. And we are asking without prejudice, right? So that we can bring it up again.
Well, John is really probably technically right. He believes that if this is an action that has already been abated, then it's gone away from a, uh, an evidentiary standpoint. He, he believes if a new action starts, we would not be bound by the with prejudice from raising it. He's probably right, it just scares me as an attorney.
And I see the tactical value of not saying, of not having that on a piece of paper.
Yeah, that's all. We'll get to the same pace, page probably, but if we're, especially if it wasn't a negotiation among the sides, you know, just I recall, make it without prejudice, it would feel better.
I thought that's what we were doing without prejudice.
He started with, originally with prejudice and I talked him out of it.
Okay, fair enough. Because we want to be able to bring it back again, because even though it's repaired up to the standards technically, it's, it's not repaired well enough to where any of us think it's going to last for any amount of time.
And I really think the legality of it is, if it becomes non-compliant again because it gets dilapidated, we'd be able to reinstate it even if we are, were start a new lawsuit, which I think we're good, that's where we're going to wind up anyhow, I think, because, you know, it's going to be more than a year, but I'm, I'm share the same concern. That's why, why I say the minimum housing code is not going anywhere.
If, if you continue with the lawsuit and do not drop it, uh, and he shows that he has met the minimum compliance, then we've lost the case, so there's no use to drag it on.
That's right.
If he does, uh, eventually come out of compliance again, we can start the whole process right back where it, where it was, but, uh, well, I think what we're worried about is going back and trying to, uh, say, well, the same things that there were problems the first time are still the problems and we're not saying that, we're saying he brought it up to the very minimum standards, but, uh, in the future, if it drops down below that, let's say, well, he did bring it up temporarily to the minimum standards, but it's down below standards now and so we're back to the table to enforce our ordinance.
Right. So I do think I need a motion and, and vote that effect to dismiss without prejudice.
I make a motion that we approve the dismissal without prejudice on the lawsuit as described by the county, by the town, excuse me, attorney. It's all hard to break.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, down to going around the table. Anybody got anything they want to have before I get to you? Yes, sir.
I'd like to say thank you to the town manager and for the department heads that we got a chance to meet with, uh, Friday before last. Uh, Councilman Lewis and I had the opportunity to travel around to take a look at our wonderful sewer plant. I'm glad we did that first. But that was very, very educational and informative and our water plant, our police